Let's see where it is, Brown.
I like it. Good afternoon, welcome to the June 16, 2016 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Mr. Bill Shacklet has someone he wants to introduce and then will be responsible for the prayer and the pledge.
That's right, thank you Mayor. Yes, I want to introduce a friend of mine, but also a friend of our community, Mr. Scott Foster. Scott is the Executive Director of the Journey Home here in our town, and he is also the Chairman of the Homeless Alliance of Rutherford County, and I invited him to come and speak to us just a little bit and then do our opening prayer. Scott?
Thank you, Councilman Shacklet. Appreciate the opportunity to come share with you just a little bit tonight. I am the Director and Founder of the Journey Home in our community, and wanted to share just very briefly with you about that. As our community has grown very robustly over the last generation or two, we've had a rise in some of our poverty issues in our community, homelessness and other things. The Journey Home is a Christian outreach that serves as a day center and also provides housing for a number of folks that are experiencing homelessness in our community, and also are kind of precariously housed or just struggling with poverty issues. Our philosophy is to take day-to-day resources and use those to form relationships, kind of that's our tool, to engage people and form relationships in order that we might help them move from where they are in a different direction. Ultimately, our goal is to help folks kind of gain economic stability and really reintegration into community life. We involve many, many different groups, churches of all denominations throughout our community, volunteer and participate, as well as businesses and other civic organizations, and we collaborate across our city and county with many other organizations, and that in another capacity, I was elected as the Chairman of the Homeless Alliance of Rutherford County. Back about 17 years ago now, former Mayor Reeves got together a small group of people, and as we started to have some issues with homelessness and the growth of poverty, as we had a growth in our general population, which is a common occurrence throughout growing communities, said, hey, let's get the community together and see what we can do to work on these issues. And over time, we have addressed many things in the community, and back a few years ago, maybe three or four years ago, former Mayor Bragg got a group of us together and say, hey, what can we do to reorganize our homeless task force into a viable vehicle to really do collaborative community work? So we are an organization of organizations, everything from education to healthcare to social services, just the full gamut, that work together in order to bring resources and bring solutions to poverty issues that we're having in our community. We've also made a request of the city to help us in a couple of ways in moving a collaborative effort forward to actually make more efficient the work that we do together as organizations. So just wanted to share that with you, and certainly we're available, would love to see any of you drop by the Journey Home, be glad to answer questions and that kind of thing. But without further ado, why don't we pray, shall we? Father God, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together, we thank you for this community, we're grateful for every way that you blessed us. God, we thank you for its diversity, we thank you for the way that folks work together. God, I pray over this group tonight that you would give them knowledge and wisdom in the way that we should shape things for our community, and the way that we should serve our neighbors and the citizens here, and not just this area, but all the folks that come here to do business and through family relationships, and just all the folks that come and experience Murfreesboro. God, I pray that in all that we do, we will honor you. I pray that you would help us to show our love for each other and every citizen of our community, and we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Scott, thank you for the work that you and your organization and many others do, so we appreciate your hard work. I have a couple of ceremonial items for tonight. The city of Murfreesboro was honored with the 2015-2016 Innovation Award from the United Way of Rutherford and County Counties for innovative efforts in workforce engagement during this year's annual giving campaign. The city's giving campaign was led by Ms. Jennifer Moody, who is also in the recent VIP magazine, right, with your pet, so Rob wanted me to make sure and put that in there. And also Jane Corbin, the Human Resource Analyst, who personally visited each city department and led the departments to a record-breaking year for both the city and the United Way. As a result of everyone's collective efforts, the city achieved a 19% increase in participation and 15% increase in contributions. In total, the city raised $38,000 to support programs of the United Way. So thank you for your leadership and your good work to the city. It's Men's Health Week, so this is, I think, Kenya's not here, but I think this has been the third or fourth year in a row for Men's Health Week. So whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African American men having the lowest life expectancy, and whereas educating the public health care providers about the importance of healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems resulting reducing rates of mortality from disease. Whereas the Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop Men's Health Week as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventative health practices, and whereas Murfreesboro Men's Health Week will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, diabetes, mental health, prostate, testicular, and colon cancer, and whereas the citizens of this state are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now therefore, I, Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the week ending on Father's Day as Men's Health Week. And want to ask Darren Gore and Mr. Clay Beach. So Clay has served on the Water and Sewer Board since 2001, and Clay will be rolling off end of this month, is that right? So Clay is moving out of the city, and so we've got, wanted to present Clay a proclamation tonight, and I'll read this, and Darren, I think you've got a few words that you'll want to say. Whereas he has served on the Water and Sewer Board since 2001, and is currently serving his fourth four-year term in the 15 years of being an instrumental part of the board, he has served as Board Vice Chairman since 2003. Whereas his tenure on the board, he oversaw the creation of multiple sanitary sewer special assessment districts, incentivizing development for the city along the Salem Highway Corridor, the Joby Jackson Corridor, and the Medical Center Parkway Corridor, and whereas under his leadership, Murfreesboro Water and Sewer established a stormwater utility program that allows a comprehensive approach to improving the health of the city's waterways by eliminating illicit discharges, establishing vegetative buffers, improving construction and post-construction site runoff. Whereas, under his guidance, he facilitated a partnership with Middle Tennessee State University that allowed for public education and outreach efforts that initiated annual stream cleanups, stream-side tree plantings, and fostered a more informed public on the need to protect our water resources. And whereas he successfully adopted Water and Sewer Department policies, procedures, and general design guidelines, whereas he has supported the establishment of the Water and Sewer Rates along with buy-in capacity charges that have sustained annual operations and maintenance costs, and at the same time balanced affordability for the city's low and fixed income rate payers. Whereas his progressive insight helped lead Murfreesboro into being the largest reclaimed water system in the state of Tennessee, affording the Water and Sewer Department the vision and means of integrating water resources to support the city's 2035 comprehensive plan, and whereas he is connected with businesses, volunteer agencies, faith-based agencies, governmental institutions, industrial and commercial stakeholders, and created other alliances too numerous to mention to ensure Murfreesboro was prepared for opportunities and achievement. Whereas our city is fortunate to have had such a devoted and dedicated person as Clay Beach to serve in the best interest of the customers of the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department and the citizens of Murfreesboro. Now therefore, I, Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire city of council, do hereby proclaim June 16, 2016, is a day to honor and recognize the accomplishments of Clay Beach, and ask all citizens to join me in this well-deserved recognition.
No, no, I'm not going to roast, no, I can't roast.
You got a pimp?
No PowerPoint and no roasting, we may do that later. But I do want to say one thing about Mr. Clay Beach, and that is his, one true quality of candidness or candor, and I will say this about a board member, and you all serve on boards, one of the best qualities you can have with a board member is their candor, because there's no guesswork. And Mr. Beach will let you know what he thinks of an issue very quickly, and he'll let you know very straight up what he thinks, and as a Director, I loved it, because that meant I didn't have to guess where he stood on anything. So the last four years I've been Director, I think we've established a good relationship. I trust Clay, and I think Clay trusted me, and I still trust me, and I really can call him a friend. We've been on the golf course a few times together, and I appreciate his friendship. I'm going to miss him, he's been a great guide and advisor on the board, but he's not going to be away, he's going to be just out in the county line, and I'll call him, I'm sure, on several issues in the future, so I really appreciate his leadership.
All right. Does anyone have any more ceremonial items? Rick? Hey, Rick does have a ceremonial item that he's not going to tell you about, that the 12-year-old, right, his girl's 12-year-old soccer team was, to our knowledge, the first Division One state champion in the history of Murfreesboro. So congratulations to that great. And then, I guess another ceremonial item is Coach Shacklet, his team defeated an undefeated team in the Little League 12-13-year-old age group this past Saturday, so they had a great championship season and won the championship on Saturday night, so great job, Coach. And how many years is this you've coached?
Forty-one years.
Forty-one years. Bill is a mainstay at Optimus and holds lots of respect, so thank you for what you do, Bill. All right, we'll move into the consent agenda, and we are going to ask that Item C will be withdrawn from your consent agenda. If you would, when you make a motion, please make that we're withdrawing Item C.
Move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of Item C.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the minutes from the May 19, 2016 regular meeting. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Move for approval of their minutes.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the minutes from the May 19, 2016 regular meeting. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Move for approval of their minutes.
Motion is second.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into second readings. We'll consider for passage on second and final reading, ordinance 16019, to rezone an area along Las Casas Pike and North Rutherford Boulevard to Commercial French CF District
Move for approval on second reading.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading, ordinance 16020, to zone approximately .55 acres along Veterans Parkway as Commercial French CF District simultaneous with the next station, and rezone approximately 6.5 acres as Commercial French CF District 2016-412.
Move for approval, second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading, ordinance 16021, to rezone an area at 1216 North Maple Street to Commercial French CF District 2016-416.
Move for approval, second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading, ordinance 16021, to rezone an area at 1216 North Maple Street to Commercial French CF District 2016-416.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion is second.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for amendment to ordinance 16023. So we need, Craig, do we need to have a motion for the amendment to ordinance 16023?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we will consider Item B next.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Well now, consider for passage on second and final reading, as amended, ordinance 16023, amending the Murfreesboro City Code Chapters 5, 11 1/2, 6, 17 1/2, 18 1/2, 21, 24, and 33, to delete or amend unused or unnecessary sections of code to prepare for publication. Okay, 16 instead of 6, I apologize, I'm Miss Wright, thanks. Thanks, Mayor Young.
Can you move for approval?
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, first readings. You have a letter from the city recorder, finance director, regarding 2016 budget amendments.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the budget amendment for sort of year-end housekeeping, the risk management and the insurance funds are claims, it's kind of hard to know what's going to come in, we need to make sure we have enough budget to cover those, we're just estimating high, we believe, but I wanted to get these amendments in there, because once year-end passes, we can't go back and amend after the year is over like we did for years and years, so that's all these two amendments are. We have enough fund balance and cash to cover these amendments, and it's just more to be prepared in case we have really large claims between now and the end of the year, and we only have two meetings left to pass this on two readings, so we took that opportunity. We looked at our other funds, and we don't believe we'll have any other issues with any other fund. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 16030, amending the 2015-2016 budget, this is the fifth amendment.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Wright. Pursuant to Resolution 16RPH27 adopted by the city council on May 19, 2016, will conduct a public hearing to consider amending approximately 22.5 acres in the planned unit development, PUD District, located along Memorial Boulevard and Haynes Haven Lane. National Healthcare Corporation is the applicant, 2016-418. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 30, 2016 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blom.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. First of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that we wish Ms. Green, who is at home tonight, a speedy recovery from the flu, so I know she's watching at home tonight. At any rate, our first public hearing tonight is a PUD amendment request for the Adams Place Development, which is located along the west side of Memorial Boulevard. Adams Place was originally approved as a PUD back in the 1990s, and it's been amended several times as they've made additions to the facility. As you know, it's an assisted living and independent living facility, very recognizable landmark along Memorial Boulevard. They come to us today with an amendment for the addition of approximately 13,000 square foot memory care unit. Because that wasn't shown on previous PUD iterations, it does require an amendment to the PUD. So as such, they have made application to amend their PUD. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this matter on May the 4th, and the Planning Commission does recommend approval unanimously of this item. Mr. Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering has a brief presentation on the proposed expansion, the PUD amendment. I'll be happy to answer any questions, I'll come back up to the lectern after the public hearing, be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I'd like to invite Mr. Roundtree to give his presentation.
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We'd like to first thank you for this opportunity to present Adams Place, new addition to you, and also like to thank the city staff for all their support walking through this process. It's been a good process, we've had opportunities to meet with the neighborhood and have several neighborhood meetings to kind of figure out exactly what the pulse would be around the facility, and we're excited, and everything's been favorable up to this point. As I'd like to let you know, I'm accompanied by several members here, Mr. Buckley Winfrey with Adams Place, Mr. Adam Coggins with NHC, Mr. Merv Wittenberg with NHC, and Mr. Jim Pettit from Johnson Bailey, and my lovely assistant, Enik Gerald from Huddleston Steel Engineering. So with that, Adams Place has a great reputation within the community, it's been serving the community for over 18 years, and as Matthew mentioned, this is an expansion to an existing facility, and really, they're excited. Right now, they provide a continuum of care in terms of providing 93 independent living apartments, 83 assisted living units, and 90 skilled living beds, and what we're proposing is the addition of 23 units strictly for memory care, and again, they're excited because this provides the opportunity to have a full continuum of care for our senior citizens within Murfreesboro. And if you would, just go ahead and stand up. The site plan is fairly basic in terms of complexity, the new unit is in blue, and basically it's behind the existing facility, and that's been really nice, because it has really no visual obstruction or neuro change in character from Memorial Boulevard, so it's tucked back behind the existing facility and will literally attach to the existing facility. It'll displace a covered carport area, that's the extent of the impact in terms of, you know, the existing grounds, those parking lots will be reallocated on other portions of the site, and they'll also add an additional covered carport that's being removed as a result of the addition. The addition itself, as Matthew said, is about 13,000 square feet, 23 beds, it'll employ 10 more employees as far as Adams Place is concerned, and it'll leverage some facilities within the existing facility, they'll use the same kind of dining space, so it'll be a little of a joint use, but the beds will be specifically located in that building for memory care. As we mentioned, typically our concern with any kind of change in the site plan is the neighbors, and there'll be no change in the existing buffer, so as far as the perception around the facility, everything will be the same, so we're excited about that, and again, the parking will just be displaced other portions on the site, so we feel like we can easily accommodate the parking that will be displaced by the new facility. Go ahead, Enik, playing the next piece up. And as far as the architecture is concerned, it's a one-story building that will have brick with a precast type of concrete accentuating elements, and it'll have a nice center atrium that has a nice skylight area that they can congregate within the facility. It'll be in same character as the existing facility, it'll be one-story versus two-story, but we feel like it'll be a nice compliment to how the facility looks currently, and basically inspiration comes from the existing facility. Thank you, Enik. So with that in mind, we're excited about the possibility of teaming with Adams Place. The things that may be of interest, as far as when is this project planned to start, if all the process goes smoothly, they're hoping to begin construction in August and continue on through the year, and hopefully be completed by the following August. And one of the questions that came up in our Planning Commission meeting was, will access be for construction? And the construction access will be off of Memorial Boulevard along the northern side of the facility, so it should have minimal impact in terms of, again, the surrounding neighborhood, they'll use an existing entrance for the construction entrance, and hopefully it'll be a smooth process with the existing residents. They've been well informed about the potential of this facility coming online, and Adams Place has done really well communicate with their people internally, so we feel confident it'll be a great project, and we're looking forward to your approval tonight. If you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you very much.
What was the number of additional units?
23 beds.
Can I go and sign up for one? All right, I think we're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing, but before we do that, our public hearing rules that if you're representing a group, you have five minutes, if you're representing an individual, you have three, if you'll keep all comments addressed to the city council, we'll get answers at the end of the public hearing. If you'll also state your name and address when you come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, we'll consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 16027, to amend an area in the planned unit development, PUD District, located along Memorial Boulevard and Haynes Haven Lane, 2016-418.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you for what you guys do in our community, especially with many of our residents, so thank you for the service you provide.
Absolutely.
New business pursuant to Resolution 16RPH28 adopted by the city council on May 19, 2016, we will conduct a public hearing to consider amending approximately 5.6 acres in the planned commercial development, PCD District, located along West Northfield Boulevard and Sulphur Springs Road, Tarver Properties Incorporated applicant, 2016-417. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May 30, 2016 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, our next public hearing tonight is for a PCD amendment, properties located at the southwest corner of West Northfield Boulevard and Sulphur Springs Road. Back in 2005, the property was actually rezoned as a PCD, and that PCD never came to fruition. The PCD included a bank, several retail buildings, and an office building along the western property line, but as I mentioned, that never came to fruition, and the property has sat there with that same PCD zoning over the last 11 years, and this request seeks to amend the PCD as that plan that was approved back in 2005 is no longer a viable plan. The project that you have before you tonight modifies the PCD, and for the main purpose is the development of a self-storage facility. The self-storage facility would be on what is called Lot 1 in the plan book, and that would be the more immediate development. Lot 2 would honor some of the same quality requirements of Lot 1, but there are no immediate development plans for Lot 2. Lot 2 would be a commercial out parcel on the corner of Northfield and Sulphur Springs, and the self-storage would be located on the western, about 60% of the property, directly adjacent to the lots on Sanders Court. But since the But since it is such a radical departure from the previously approved PCD zoning, the applicant does have to come, that does have to come back through the rezoning process and amend the PCD. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this matter on May the 4th and unanimously recommended approval, subject to an addendum to the plan book being made. There was a neighboring property owner who submitted a letter and also spoke at the public hearing. There were a list of activities in the mini storage that he did, that he found objectionable, and he wanted, or he asked that those activities be prohibited. And the motion from the Planning Commission did include a condition that the, that those items be added to the program book and as prohibited uses in the mini storage. We have not gotten a revised program book that prohibits those uses. So, the public hearing has been duly advertised. We do need to conduct a public hearing tonight, but staff would ask that you take action to defer the item after the public hearing, as we have not received the addendum to the program book, or the revised program book, with those prohibited uses that were a part of the motion by the Planning Commission. I'll be happy to answer any questions before the public hearing. I can come back up here to the lectern and answer those, answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Rob Mulchan with SEC, who is the representative of the applicant, does have a brief PowerPoint presentation that he'd like to give to you.
Canadian Mayor, council members, Rob Mulchan with SEC, here tonight to present to you Northfield Village. As Matthew alluded to, this project was originally from 2005.
The, it's been made aware that we're not getting any signal on the laptop, so the PowerPoint will not be working.
We'll change directions then.
It's Dare, Dare, Mr. Gore did that, just so everyone else would know what it feels like when people get up in their PowerPoint presentation.
Next time, Mr. Gore and I are on the golf course, we'll talk about it. Anyways, thank you, everyone. Northfield Village is, Matthew alluded to, this is on the corner of Sulphur Springs Road and Northfield Boulevard. Originally brought through in 2005 as a planned commercial development rezoning, the original property was a mixture of commercial and retail type uses. There was office, there was retail restaurants, and also a bank shown at the point in time in 2005. Since then, the property's sent vacant until Mr. Tarver and Tarver Properties has come forward to make an amendment to the PCD. They're looking to do a, on two lots. The first lot would be a small upscale mini storage warehouse facility on roughly 3.79 acres. The storage facility would encompass roughly 63,000 square feet of storage space within nine buildings. The second lot, as Matthew alluded to in his presentation, that is going to be a corner, on the corner of Sulphur Springs and Northfield Boulevard, will remain vacant at this point in time until a said user comes forward for that property. Again, it'll be a commercial type use, a bank, restaurant, some kind of out parcel type of use on that at some point in time. The plan itself is in your book. The, as you can see inside the book, the property will have three access points, two on Northfield Boulevard and one on Sulphur Springs Boulevard. With this project, we're proposing a couple turn lanes to be installed on West Northfield Boulevard. We're incorporating a right-hand turn lane into the warehouses, into the storage facility, as well as a left-hand turn lane on the westbound lanes turning into the facility as well. There'll also be a, a, a right in-and-out access point closer to the intersection on Northfield Boulevard. On Sulphur Springs Road, there will be one access point, which is at the southern end of the property. We'll also be proposing widening Sulphur Springs Road in this general location and adding a dedicated left-hand turn lane to this intersection to help alleviate any traffic burdens that are out there now, and also that would come from this property and Lot 2 as well. As you can see on the plan itself, the project more or less utilizes the storage facilities to encompass itself, more or less creating a walled-in enclosure. The structure, the, this will be a gated-accessed warehouse facility, so that you'll have a keypad and such like that. Talk a little bit about the, the materials themselves. The, this will be upscale, as you can see in the refer, in the renderings on page, on page 20. The buildings that face Northfield Boulevard will have a very upscale masonry composite for the facades. The rest of the facades around the backside of the building along the residential sections will also be a masonry type of structure. These are only one-story structures with a gable metal roof. The edge along Northfield Boulevard will have a lot of articulation and edging to it, so it'll help break up these long expanses of the walls. Also incorporated into this will be the landscaped component, as you can see on page 24. The property itself will be heavily landscaped. The, because of the residential uses around the property, will be incorporated in a Type C landscape buffer to enhance the, you know, surrounding of the building itself as much as the elevations are encompassing the warehouse, the storage facility. And then along the Northfield side, helping to, the, accentuate the architecture, will be a lot of good landscape plantings that will help screen any parking areas, dumpsters, and such like that from West Northfield Boulevard. The Lot 2, as I alluded to earlier, will be, is kind of being held back at this point in time in regards to what type of development would be put forth on this property, but the intent will be for some type of commercial out parcel usage down the road. A full list of these uses has been outlined in the book in regards to what, what the potential uses could and could not be in regards to Lot 2. So, with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Point of clarification on the road improvements to Northfield and Sulphur Springs Road?
Mm-hmm.
Who pays for that?
Right now, the, the turn lanes and such will be done by the developer himself.
During our public hearing for the Planning Commission, you had neighbors come and speak for this. I would think that was something that you would want to mention.
Yes, in regards to what the original plan for this project versus what we're bringing forth today, the residents around the development were very much in favor of this change from what was proposed back in 2005. The 2005 plan was going to add an extremely, a large quantity of vehicular traffic to this area, whereas with this warehouse use, you're talking a much more diminished amount of traffic flow in and around this site going in and out of the property itself. So, that's, you know, one of the things, one of the reasons when the, we had our neighborhood meeting, those residents were pretty much more in favor for this plan than they were, you know, 10, 11 years ago.
Yeah, at the neighborhood meeting, we had probably 25 people or so show up, I think, and there were concerns initially, and as the conversation went on, I think, and they understood what the plan was, understood the impact, the reduction in traffic over what was currently proposed. I think that most everybody that I've spoken with in the neighborhood that was at that meeting left with a very positive feeling that this would be a really good use for that property.
Can I ask a question on the, it says that we're, they're requesting a 15-foot setback, a front setback?
Yes, sir.
Is that for the, what would be kind of the, I don't know, whatever it'd be, northeast corner of Building 9, where it looks like it's closest to the, the turn-in lane? Is that why that is requested?
Yeah, yeah, the, the front corner where the entrance is over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's more or less in order to, you know, we're trying to get this thing kind of up to the street and kind of help make the presence of that corner element of that architecturally. You know, that's more the signature. If you look at the architectural diagrams on the other pages, this is a signature element in regards to how that looks.
I mean, is that going to be about 15 feet? Is that kind of where?
It's 15 foot from the right-of-way, so you've probably got another 10 foot between the actual, once we put the turn lanes in, you got another 10 feet. So, you're talking about 25 feet from the edge of the curb with that dedicated right-hand turn lane, plus another 11 foot for that turn lane before you actually get to the travel lanes on Northfield.
Okay, and some, I, as far as when we look at this in the future, because I think what he said, you know, we'll obviously have to come back and do something for the other lot, for Lot 2 later. I guess my only concern with having a 15-foot front setback, if that applies to the entire picture here, that we don't want that right out there on the corner, that might not be the best use for that. We'll, we'll have to deal with that at the time, right?
No, the, right, right now, we're proposing on Lot 1, the 15-foot front setback. On Lot 2, it's a much greater, I think it's more of like a 25 or 30-foot setback, because you look, if you look at the diagram of the, the pullout sheet there, it's, you know, the, the setback line is pulled back at least.
I'm looking at it, I just can't decipher very well.
No, yeah, like I said, if I'm not mistaken, it's, I think it is called out in some form in the, in the textual portion of the book that says it goes from 15 foot on Lot 1 to like a 25 or 30 something.
Very good, thanks.
And that, that property, I'm very familiar with. I live in that area, so it, you're building your storage units up on kind of a, an elevated part of that parcel, and that's going to create more water flowing off that into that lower parcel of what's Lot 2 here. And I see you've got a detention, a detention pond on your plat there, but I'd say there's going to be a lot of water coming off of that.
Mr. Taylor, who, Matt Taylor from our office is, is in the process of, as we go through this further down the road through the construction document process with Lot 1, we know that the water will be going to Lot 2, and we'll be doing a full stormwater drainage and management plan to go along with this property, but it'll also be taking into consideration what possibilities are for the amount of impervious surface put on Lot 2.
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16OZ28 to amend an area in a planned commercial development, PCD District, located along West Northfield Boulevard and Sulphur Springs Road, 2016-417.
Move for, to defer?
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Timeout.
Is the motion to defer?
The motion is to defer.
The motion is to defer. Yeah.
No, he asked.
Mr. Baum.
My understanding was that you asked for conditional approval until the book was adjusted. There's two ways to do this. We can defer, or we can give a conditional approval.
Thank you.
What, what did you suggest?
Staff suggests deferral, but another option would be to approve it and hold second reading until they amended the, the program book, either way.
My, I'm bad, I misunderstood.
Okay.
Let's move right along.
We've got motion for defer?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We're deferred.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll consider recommendations of the principal planner to schedule a public hearing to consider zoning of approximately six acres along Spike Trail and Maya Drive to planned residential development, PRD simultaneous with annexation.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and NCC Council. During its regular meeting on June 8, 2016, the Planning Commission conducted public hearings on the matters listed below, which is, after the public hearings, the Planning Commission discussed the matters and then took action to recommend their approval. This was the zoning application 2016-419 for approximately six acres along Spike Trail and Maya Drive to be zoned PRD simultaneous with annexation. Old South Properties Incorporated was the applicant. It's recommended that City Council schedule the matters for public hearings.
What's your date?
Mr. Tenell, do you have a date?
July 21st, Mayor.
Move for set of public hearing, July 21st.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider recommendations of the city engineer regarding construction contract for West Lidle Street improvements, Phase 2.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The Lidle Street Improvement Project consists of a reconstruction of Lidle Street, which is generally the continuation of the ongoing project. This will extend the improvements from Barker Street to North Church Street. It will include two travel lanes, along with a, a, a left turn lane at, at certain intersections, bike lanes, curbing gutters, on-street parking, and sidewalk. It also provides for the relocation of utilities to underground and provides aesthetic CBD-type treatment, including decorative lighting, signals, and, and landscaped areas. A portion of the project will include side street improvements as well, and the entire length is about 3,600 feet. Bids were received on May 24 with Jarrett Builders as the apparent low bidder with a submitted base bid of $5,244,688.90. On February 12 of, of 2015, the council approved a cost-sharing agreement with the Rutherford County Public Building Authority. This project's being done in conjunction with the, with the new judicial building. City staff's currently updating the construction cost or formalize the, the actual cost-sharing amounts with Rutherford County. We'll be bringing a revised agreement back to you once that has been finalized. I can tell you now that it's running about 75% for the city and about 25% for the county based on their, their impact with their construction. Funding for the, for the construction contract, contract will be from a combination of Rutherford County, the 2016 bond issue, and also, actually, a lot of this will be funded from, from savings from previous year's loans and bonds. With that, Wiser has provided a recommendation to award the project to Jarrett Builders with the attached letter and bid tabulation, and we recommend approval of the construction contract with, with approval, depending on approval by the city attorney. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Griffith. When we went through this last time, we, I know there was some right-of-way acquisition going on, there was some discussion going on, we altered the plans. Have we agreed on a plan?
We are, we're still working with the, with the local business owners. We've made improvements, adding about, parking-wise, adding about 17 spaces to the, to our original plan. So, we're, I think they had originally 56 spaces, and now we're at 47. We just considered a plan.
What's the process look like, though? I'm sorry, like, we're getting ready to, to vote to tell people to start building it?
Sure. It, it's a great question. Well, actually, the urgency has, has got to do with the, the work that's actually going on around the judicial building. We're, around August, they're expecting to start moving cranes in to, in order to, to start construction or start erecting the steel for the judicial building. So, we want to go ahead and get a contractor on board to, to get that work done just around the judicial building, which really hasn't had any, there, there hasn't been any concerns about the, the design at all. And then also, going back and working around where the proposed parking garage, while they're constructing that, we'll still be able to go back and, and work with the, continue to work with the, with the business owners, which is more to the west portion of the project, and continue to improve the, the parking situation. I've had, I'd like to say 100% positive feedback on what we've been able to do so far. There still are some things that they've asked us to look at, and even while we've been going through the appraisals, the appraisers are asking us to, to look at some stuff as well. So, it's, I, I think we've reached something that, that everyone's satisfied with, but, but we still want to, to even improve on that if, if possible. I can say that we're meeting, discussing the, the, that area several times a week, and, and are willing, committed to continue to make any improvements that's, that's necessary.
Gives me a little heartache.
I understand.
Just a little, just because, you know, I mean, I've been involved in that a good bit too, and just, I know a lot, probably lots of us have been. I just, I mean, I want to get you started up there where we get started. you started up there where we get started. But I guess I still want to make sure we're, I just, you know, I've been kind of, I haven't heard anything for two or three weeks, but a lot of times it's a good thing, but it also makes me feel like I'm not sure I've crossed my Ts and dotted my Is before I say go, and then once we say go, is it, is it go time? And if we kind of don't like what it looks like, it's too late because we already said go.
What, what was the bid? What did they bid on? If there's not a design or it's still in flux, how, how did we make a bid?
Well, most of, most of our construction projects are, have the same items available, no matter if, you know, in, with the type of road project that, that we're doing, the, the quantities are there, and really, the changes that we're talking about are really so minimal. It, it, I don't foresee any significant change to the, to the overall cost of the project. It's really more tweaking, you know, maybe we move an island or shift a, and that's, we worked with a, a business owner just within the last few weeks. He asked for deliveries if, if we could change the shape of an island. So it's really, we, we feel like we have a, a set design that's, it's really good, and the changes that we've made, I, I felt like we've gotten positive feedback for. But we want to make sure that, that the, the business owners realize that we're still open to, you know, just to continue.
Tweaking it.
Small changes, you know, tweaking of the plan as, as necessary.
I think all of us have been involved in this from comments from the, the business owners and the neighbors, and the last plan that you came up with, with the parking situation seems to solve the great majority of the problems from, from what I hear of the business owners. And, and the point about the island is a good example, you know, first it was an island, and then it may not be an island, and then it may be tweaked again to make it a delivery spot. Those things are ongoing, and I don't think that's going to have anything to do with the, the major construction part. We can, we're always listening to the business owners to find out where they are.
I'd just like to see it before I vote on it, the plan. I mean, I guess, I'm just kind of, yeah, I guess I kind of feel like I.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I was fortunate enough to go by and look at one of the business owners' plans and see what it is that you've proposed and, and the, the adjustments and stuff that you've made. I guess what we're voting on here is primarily the, the basic construction materials and everything that's involved, and, and, and it's not going to change that much if we move the island or we move a handicap spot from one point on the lot to another point on the lot. I, I think that's the tweaks that you're talking about changing.
That's right.
I don't think we're talking about a significant change, you know, personally, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, and, and I understand that, you know, I, I want you to have the freedom that if somebody looks at something and says, hey, this is a better way to do this, that we're not locked in, that we say, well, this is what the plan said, and we absolutely have to do it this way. I mean, let's, let's have the flexibility that gives us the ability to, to do the most common sense and the right thing for, for the business owners as well as for the project itself.
Yes, sir.
So I, I understand where Rick's coming from, certainly I do, because he's, I think he's wanting to see where the, the islands are and the, the road construction and stuff is, but the, but as far as, you know, the business owners have looked at it, I think they're comfortable with it. If not, they would have continued calling, and, and in fact, I've gone by and visited them and made sure that they were, and, and they liked the changes. There, there is somewhat of a reduction in, in the number of parking places. What, what percentage of parking do, do you remember what we're losing?
It was losing, as we're, we sit now, nine spaces out of, out of fifty-six. Of course.
But you're gaining a parking garage, too.
Gaining a parking garage and, and really around some assembly areas that should be a great benefit to, to the, to the project.
Yeah.
Or to the area.
And with one of the roads being used more as an alleyway, I think, as far as an unloading.
We have, we're making changes to Barker Street, actually, to, to, to change that more into an alley, to, to give the businesses that are most affected by this, this change in parking, to give them more free use of the, of that area.
I'm going to move for approval.
Eddie, real quick, we, we do have a motion for approval, but I think the business you're talking about is Mr. Florida.
Yeah, it is.
And, and they were complimenting how, you know, when I first talked with him, it was not a, probably the best situation, but I think they were complimenting how the city had worked with him, and also, you know, he had some, some good ideas on, on his business, which is one of the oldest.
Auto parts.
Auto parts businesses in the, in the, in the county. So, anyway, we have a motion. Thank y'all for working with, with their business.
Sure.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor? I'm sorry, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Because I still don't understand, I'm going to abstain from voting.
Mr. LaLance?
Yeah, I'm abstaining.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you.
There's a lot, you know, with what we're dealing with downtown, there's going to be a lot of growing pains over the next couple of years, especially, you know, we're going through the bridge over Broad right now, and that is now getting into the point where you're really going to start having some traffic delays and Lidle Street construction. So there's a lot of things that are going to be going on downtown, but, you know, in the world of construction, it gets worse before it gets better, and I think the downtown is really going to go through something that we're all going to be proud of over the next many years. There's going to be some challenges getting us there, but it's, it's going to be, I think, for the.
Milton C. Boulevard's a really good example of that going on right now, but that box culvert's abiding place, so it won't be long before, at least it'll be opened back up to traffic coming through, even though it's still going to be a construction zone. But the, but the progress is coming along well, and of course, you know, the road structure, like you say, it'll be so tremendous over what was there before. Progress just, it does have growing pains.
And I'm about to leave the city, but you know, the long-range range plan for Lidle Street really is to extend that thing all the way to.
Yeah.
Milton C. Boulevard. So those who live on Lidle Street, be prepared.
Yeah, we talked about.
All right, moving along. I don't even want to talk about that right now. All right, we'll consider recommendations of the chief of police, approval to apply for fiscal year two thousand sixteen justice assistance grant, J A G, and enter into an interlocal agreement with the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office to share the funds.
Mayor, I'm actually going to carry this item. This is a grant that we receive annually. It is a joint award of sixty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars to be split between the city and the county. This grant's used to purchase law enforcement equipment. In your packet is a resolution that would authorize the submission of this application and an interlocal agreement between the county and the city. The city will actually be the fiscal agent, and Sergeant Kyle Evans will be the grant administrator. We would request your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Director, a bids for the Segal, excuse me, soccer practice facility.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. I have two bids for your consideration. The first is for the soccer practice facility. We did open bids on May the twenty-fourth for the soccer practice facility. We received one bid that was from Landscape Services Incorporated for one million, three hundred thousand dollars, and we had two alternates, which we are not recommending. This complex has six soccer fields and has two hundred parking places, has an entrance road off Cherry Lane, fencing and a class D buffer. In order to expedite this, we've been working with the engineering department, and through Rollins Construction, we have given the site layout, the site clearing, the mass grading, the entrance road and the parking, which leaves in the Landscape Services bid, the finish grading, the sprigging of the fields, the class D buffer, the fencing and the gates, the ADA accessible mulp trail, the irrigation and the signage. We've done that because we want to make sure that we can hopefully get this facility online in the late fall. To do that, what we're planning on doing is using a different type of turf, a temporary turf at first, sowing with a fescue and rye, and leaving that for play in the fall and play in the spring, coming back in early May, or excuse me, late May, early June, and Landscape Services would come in then and sprig with Bermuda, and that facility would be ready with a turf-type fescue for the fall of two thousand seventeen. So we've, we've budgeted enough funding in our two thousand sixteen C I P to cover this, this facility. We've had Loson Associates look at the pricing based on the cost estimate. They feel comfortable with it, so we are recommending that Landscape Services Incorporated be awarded the bid for one million, three hundred thousand dollars, and that the City Council approve the mayor to sign any of the necessary documents related to the project pending the Legals Department's review and approval. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. Would they be playing soccer on it this late fall? That's our hope, Mr. Young, and that's. Practicing soccer on. Practicing soccer. Same, same. That's our hope, and that's why we went ahead and started. I went out today. They've already done the site clearing, site layout, and they were stripping the top soil off today, getting ready to do the mass grading. So project's moving forward, and with this bid, it would come in at the end of the mass grading, and go ahead and do the finish grading, put the sand in, we could go ahead and sow the fields, they'd get the irrigation in. We think we would be ready to play sometime about mid-fall. Great. You're up.
There's no more questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
We're in a motion and a double second.
Double two?
Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
The second item that I have is the bids for the Miracle Field. On May the tenth, we opened bids, we had four very competitive bids to build the Miracle Field complex. I remember that is a, a fully accessible field for people that have special needs. We'll have two fields. One will be a fully rubberized field, they'll both be lighted. Those fields will also have shade structures, bleachers, we'll have a concession area, restrooms. There'll be some very special features in this. After the bids were open, we met with Mr. Price and Ms. Price to talk about all of the things that were in the bid. We had eight different alternatives, alternates in the bids that we could look at. We discussed those, we discussed where they were on their funding and their fundraising. And after looking at it, the low bid, after considering all the alternates, was Trinity Builders Incorporated. They were here in Murfreesboro. We looked at the different alternates. Alternate number one was actually taking a turf surface that we had, an artificial turf surface, and putting grass in place of it. After talking about the accessibility of the facility, the maintenance, those kind of things, we recommended against that, so you don't see, that is a deduction listed in the alternates. But we did go ahead and take the deduction for the sidewalk. That sidewalk would have led out to Dejarnet. I know that Mr. Lyons and I talked about that could be a project in the future that we could address. Then there was a, a timing, a track timing area in there, and we took that out. The P A systems and the school boards, the prices feel like that they can get that donated or get the money for those particular items, but we added back in the concession hood. And doing that, that gave us a bid price of two million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, sixty-seven dollars. Now, the estimated cost, when you take that cost and add it to the engineering, is three million, twenty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. We did budget in our C I P, two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, but talking to the prices, they already have commitments for over five hundred thousand dollars, and we feel like there's adequate funds to cover any shortages that we may have. We have gone through it as a staff, the city administration has looked at it, Loson Associates has looked at it, and we're recommending that Trinity Builders Incorporated be awarded the bid in the amount of two million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, sixty-seven dollars, and that the City Council authorize the mayor to sign any of the documents related to this project pending the Legals Department's review and approval. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about this bid.
Any questions, Mr. Gilwin?
What's the construction schedule on that? What, what is it? We're, we're looking at hopefully a fall, I mean, excuse me, a spring of two thousand seventeen, sometime late February, early March of two thousand seventeen, opening that facility.
I'm writing that down right now, Ms. Gilwin. Mr. Lyons, if we thought about doing, I know we've got a bid awarded, but have we thought about doing a construction manager at risk to manage these projects?
And having a construction manager, we have talked about that. We've already, you know, done some work to develop a request for a proposal to have someone to be alongside city staff to help manage the construction projects. You know, as I've shared with you, the construction manager at risk delivery method that we're using on the police headquarters, I believe is going to be the future for, you know, all of our major facility projects. We are going to have somebody alongside you, but Mr. Tindall and I have already talked about going out for bid and getting a construction manager that we could also pull in to help us. You know, while staff has experience in construction projects, it's really not the same substitute for someone who's been in the construction industry that can be a guide to us.
Well, I think it'd be good, as we discussed, you know, this is a project that is really one of a kind to the city, and we only get one opportunity to get it right, so I think it may would be good to bring on additional expertise to, if anything, oversee the contractor to make sure that what's being built is what's supposed to be built, because, you know, Mr. Gilwin, I know you're experiencing record numbers of people who are at ballfields and tournaments and, you know, trying to get staff to supervise a three million dollar construction project and run their day-to-day, their day-to-day operations, that's a lot of burden on, on staff.
Yeah, we agree, we've already done a good amount of work in that direction.
Okay. And that may be something, I didn't mention that on the last project, but, you know, as we've got these larger projects that are coming on, it's good to have.
Police headquarters.
Someone who's checking to make sure that what we're getting is what we're actually supposed to be getting, and that way we don't run into issues later on down the line, so. All right, you have this recommendation in front of you.
I'm overly approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Gilwin. Okay, item fourteen, we'll consider any changes to the proposed two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen city and Murfreesboro budget.
a lot of information over the last week and a half, and so lots of good, lots of good information that's helped us, you know, on some of the discussions that we had the other night.
Very good. Well, Mayor, I thought I might organize this part of the conversation into three different groups to kind of give you a roadmap. The first group we could talk about will be the budget corrections. Those are pretty straightforward. Number two, there was discussion at your last meeting on paying health insurance. And then lastly, the third group would be anything else the council wants to consider is changes for the budget. If that approach is okay with you, let me start on bucket number one. We did identify a couple of corrections. One of the positions in the street department was incorrectly listed in the salary sheet. It is a $4,957 difference. That, however, would come from the stormwater fund, which would then change that budget. So you get $4,957 more from the stormwater fund to correct the title change. I might take these one by one to see if there's any questions, and Melissa, we then look for a vote on each of these so we can keep.
Or we could vote on this letter. If they're satisfied, follow them and do this. This letter is one.
Okay, that's the street department change. Secondly, there is a reclassification of a position in the traffic department that would cause an increase to the salary expense of $5,598. And lastly, there's no change in money, but, you know, we always want to make sure that the job titles that we use are already approved by the city council. So Mr. Gore, as we've changed to the automated meter reading system and used technology more for our meter reading, has several titles that changed and some grades. The money's already in his budget, but we did want to be very clear about what the new titles would be. So those would be the three corrections that I would be happy to answer any questions.
If there are no questions, I move approve the budget correction.
Motion to second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Next, I submitted information to you following up on your questions regarding some options on both pay increases and health insurance. You all asked for some options, so the cost, the budget already includes a 2% pay increase as well as a 2% increase to the salary ranges. Option one, to go to, from 2% to 2.5%, would cost approximately $256,000. Option number two, a 3% increase would cost approximately $505,000.
That's from a 2% to a 3%, a full percentage point.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I will take a minute just because I had a discussion today that I want to make sure you guys sort of understood where I was going with the absorption of the insurance cost last time. I think it might have gotten melded into another, another one of those discussions, but basically what I was throwing out there, for lack of better terms, was that, you know, we, our consultants said that we might want to come up with a 7% increase. Staff said maybe that ought to be a 4% increase. All I was saying is if we keep the, if we keep the raises as they are, then maybe we ought to just make that a 0% increase. Okay, so it was about, I think we figured out it was about 110,000. I'm sorry, I've got another page up, but.
Yeah, it's $112,000, and in the health insurance section of my memo to you, that was option number one, would be the city picking up that 4% difference.
I just want to make sure you all kind of knew that was, that was the end of what I had explained.
I'd like to respectfully submit an idea, and I hope that no one takes offense to it because I'm not trying to offend anybody with this idea, but the, my intentions are to still improve the bottom end of our employee scale. And when we're looking at $950,000, basically, at 2% increase of the overall budget for salaries, and we take it and divide it by the number of employees, which is approximately 830, is that correct?
849.
50, okay. So if you divide it by 850, it comes out to $1,117 or something like that. I'm going to submit the idea that we potentially, in order to avoid all the things that can happen when you start doing percentages and all the things that can, can happen in that situation, my, my idea is to simply give everybody the same raise, and that would be give everybody a $1,200 raise. And so if you gave 850 people a $1,200 raise, you're not significantly changing the number very much, but for the guy who's making $25,000 rather than getting a $500 raise, he'll be getting $1,200. You're not going to have anybody who would catch anybody because everybody would move up the same, and every, and you're not going to have anybody who's topped out. So what I'm suggesting is the pay range, the men and the max pay range be moved up $1,200, as well as each full-time employee's pay be moved up $1,200. So they're staying exactly where they're at in their ranges. It gives them more potential for topping out later on, and it gives everybody $1,200, which is an equal and fair amount, I think, of a raise. And so that's, that's the, the idea that I've gotten, and if anybody would like to.
Have a question, Eddie. Is that on top of the 2% raise that they're getting anyway?
No, no, no. It's just a flat $1,200 pay increase for every employee, and it's raising the ranges $1,200 too, so for the employee who's topped out, he's still going to get $1,200. Nobody's going to catch anybody. Nobody's going to pass anybody because everybody's getting the same exact raise. So basically, we're just taking the results of the study that came back last year that said this is what we should pay these people, and increasing those numbers by $1,200, which is the 2% base number. It's a little more than 2%, but it's not much, for a total increase in the budget. So what it is, it's just a different distribution of the salary so that it gives the guy at the bottom a little more boost up this year, and, and I'm not saying this is a precedent that I would like to do every year, but I, I just think that this is an opportunity that we have because we're just coming off of a pay study to bump everybody's pay up and not, by using a percentage, it seems to be manipulating the scale more at the higher end than it does at the bottom end, and this gives everybody the same amount of increase.
It looks like it costs about that much more.
Yeah, it's about $70,000 increase, so it's not a significant impact on the budget. And for the guy at the, at the bottom of the scale, I mean, that's $100 a month. I mean, that's a pretty significant increase, and, and the guy who's making, you know, $25,000 or $30,000, that's going to be a really good raise for him. At, for the guy at the very top, it's not going to be nearly as incrementally, percentage-wise, nearly the increase, but it, but I get the feeling, for me personally, I think it's fair because we're giving them all the same amount, so.
Everybody's taking home $100 more a month.
Right.
What's our median salary?
About $46,000.
Okay. Is that median or average?
The average.
And a 2% increase on a $50,000 employee would be $1,000, so actually
Slightly more than 2%.
It's slightly more than 2% for the median income.
Average.
Yeah.
What's this going to do to compression?
It can't hurt it.
It won't.
Right?
Won't hurt it.
Well, it couldn't because they're all
They're all going up relatively to each other, the same figure.
Nobody could overlap anybody. Nobody's going to pass anybody. Nobody's going to catch anybody. Nobody's going to be held back because they're topped out on their pay, and it actually moves the ranges up a little bit to allow for inflation, so.
I'm going to mention, I want to mention two things here. I'm going to take opportunity here, and I, I don't want to, this, this has everything to do with what you're talking about, but I want, we need to circle back to that specifically, but, you know, particularly after our meeting a couple of weeks ago, it became apparent to me that what I think might be a good idea for us is that as we're maybe a year or so into this MAG study, that maybe what we want to consider as a body is to, you know, maybe a retreat item, do kind of a one-year look back. You know, here, we got a, we got compression study that we'd like to address, you know, I'd like to, you know, this, this kind of stuff right here that he's talking about is something that we could clearly address in that and start thinking about why, you know, if we think that, if we think that our bottom end is not really, you know, the rates that we're paying them is not really within the market, maybe that'd be a good time to, you know, kind of look at that and say, okay, well, look, you know, look into it a little bit deeper so we can say, hey, you know, this is, this is something we think we need to do as far as, you know, percent, on a percentage basis, increase more. So I, I don't know, the compression thing, if we do it on a percentage basis, we don't, I don't think we'll overlap anybody. I think the overlaps come with promotions typically, but, but what happens is because it's compounding, the, the compression that we do have will grow a little because they'll be getting a raise on their last raise when they're already above somebody that maybe they typically wouldn't be on, on just a longevity basis. Does that make sense? I mean, because they've already, the overlap already exists. If they get a larger raise, that just widens the gap. So that wouldn't happen with this. My, now, back to your exact thing is to say, you know, my number one worry with it would be to, if we did this several years in a row, that we would end up with a lot of our positions out of their pay range, or topped out really fast and then maybe get out of market. Right? Because we're on a percentage basis, so it's, I think that's probably not a smart organizational move if we were to do that multiple times. But if we would, if, if you guys are interested in, in addressing kind of a one-year review of the MAG study, then, you know, maybe what this is, is a good opportunity to kind of say, okay, look, let's not make anything, kind of, let's not expand the issues any, that we have out there. Let's address it, see what it is, and then, okay, we know kind of going into next year, hey, here's a way we know we need to attack it and what we want to address. I don't know, I'm, this is kind of new, so.
The impact of this is, is, and I'll get it down to a real estate agent I was talking to last night who's got a contract with a city employee, and they're in the $35,000 range, and they're trying to buy a house. And he said the only thing that's preventing her from buying a house is $100. And he said if she had $100 more a month to, to take care of her reoccurring debt, she can buy this house. He said with her current income, she can't do it, and, and with the minimal raise that she would get, she can't buy a house. With this raise that I'm talking about given at the lower end of the scale, it will affect the ability for our lower-income employees to be able to have a home.
Well, but I agree, but there's a lot of factors that go into buying a house, like what her personal debt is, like, so there's, you know, to put that, to put it back on the city, that.
Oh, I'm not putting it on the city. I'm not saying we have the responsibility to give her more money to pay for a house, but.
I think exactly what you're talking about as far as making sure and rewarding that everyone, I like the idea. I think there may be some unintended consequences that we have to think about that. So if you look at the $30,000 employee with a raise, that's really like a 3.5% or 4% increase, is that right?
Yeah.
So, but where does that do, what, what does that do? We've gone through the pay study that says this is what this position is supposed to pay, and so if we, if we do that, say, a certain, compared to market, when we give a 3.5% position, what we've got to understand is that's not only going to ripple where we are right now, that's going to ripple moving forward on what, what the higher positions are for those, those positions. So it's not just, that's the part I'm, when I start thinking through these, to go, well, it's not just giving the raise right now, it's what are you going to do to the higher, the starting range of those salaries? Because all of a sudden, because of policy decisions, and that's what we talk, we're really talking about.
Right.
You know, we've got 900 employees or 1,000 full-time employees that are under like four or five different policy decisions that have caused the compression issues and all of those things. So if we make a policy decision to do a flat raise, then we're making another policy decision that's going to cause issues for the person that was hired this year and gets that 3.5% or 4% raise to the person that may be hired next year and may only get a 2% raise under that, under the next year's plan, so.
It could be.
So that, then you're going to have the person that we hire in next year who says, well, this person's doing the same job, but they're 6% lower than where I am right now because you guys gave them a 4% raise this year, and you're only giving me a 2% raise next year.
But we're raising the scale, the top of the scale, for his top out to be $1,200 higher. And so ultimately, he's going to progress, and I'm just suggesting this for one year because I think we would be in a different situation had we had a retreat at this point. And, and so, so at this point, I, I think once we have a retreat and we can come up with a, a policy plan of how we need to handle it, I think we would be basically putting it off. I don't think $1,200 is going to skew the, the overall, what people are paid. I mean, because, I mean, the, the study, I mean, we, we still find ironically, you know, some positions that we say are out of line with what the market is. Even though we did the study, we're making adjustments in here to people's salaries, which would do exactly what you're saying, you know, is happening because we're, we're allowing, you know, an employee to say that they're going to hire in because we're moving the range currently.
Right.
They're going to hire in at a higher rate than what the range was when that person that we're promoting to that position hired in, so.
What I mean is, is that we're getting ready to hire, I think I read on the report, you know, we've got 10 new applicants that have been selected for our firefighter position. So those positions are being brought in at 35,000, is that right?
Roughly.
So that's going to, the people who are at that starting fire position, they're going to get raised up by that amount, but they're going to be significantly higher, but percentage-wise, than the people who are being brought in. I don't say significantly, 1% or 2%. Because, and so we're going to have the same people below that we're going to have to catch up next year. Does that, does that make sense?
I can't figure out if that, I can't figure out if it happens or not, to be honest with you.
A rising tide raises all ships, is the way I'm looking at it. So I think if you raise this guy's salary by $1,200, the entry-level guy coming in, no matter what he comes in, if it's $1,200 higher, he's still going to be ahead of him. And, 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 you know, I.
I may be.
One thing, here's, here's one thing that might happen, though, is what we may end up doing is if, I don't think, I don't think it'll create what I call overlap, you know, where somebody leapfrogs. I don't think it'll create that, but what I think it will do is create a wider gap in between. So if we do it this way this year, and then next year, let's just say we have a, across the board, 2% raise, that this year, you know, this, the, the first-year guy's going to be 4% plus 2%, this guy's going to just be up 2%, so there's always going to be a 4% gap instead of a, of the, across the board, you know, a 2 and 2 like that. And I guess that would be the same if we did a 3% raise this time versus doing a 2% raise next time, so that doesn't necessarily change that.
As long as you vary your percentage, you're always going to have that, which 3.5% versus 2%.
So let me go back to this, the insurance thing and why I brought it up in the first place last week, and I, I think we are so, we had so much going on, but, you know, kind of the idea with the insurance, if it's 400 bucks a month for the top, you know, the family PPO, the suggested number was 7%, let's, let's call it 28 bucks per month, that the employee would have had to bear of that, okay? Staff brought that down to 4%, but if we bring that to zero, you know, we basically are increasing everybody, I mean, you know, it's a backwards way of looking at it, but we're not increasing them by $28, so keeping 28 more dollars in everybody's pocket until we kind of look at it in the retreat in August.
Yeah.
You know, we may, we may want to do a, a smaller step to figure out, okay, look, is there a way that we can address the bottom end of the range, keep this on a percentage basis on the raise, but if we absorb the insurance, we still have, the $25 or the $28 saving still is a bigger impact to the lower-end folks. $28 savings still is a bigger impact to the lower-end folks. It's 28 instead of 100.
It's 1521 would be the maximum increase. The health insurance increases.
On, based on 4%.
Based on 4% range from $3.37 a month to $15.21 a month.
Yeah, based on 7%. That's, I was, you know, I was talking kind of seven, the starting point, all the way to zero, you know, is where I was getting the $28 to zero, so.
Eddie, I think you've got, both of y'all have got great points. What I'm trying to, to be cognizant about is that, you know, what's really got us in the situation that we're talking about is where, as council members in the past, that there's, there's been decisions, well, let's do this this year, and let's change that for next year. And so we need to find something, in my opinion, that.
And that's where I hope we come to some consensus in a retreat.
Yeah, if we can get some consistency, so that way we don't end up with four or five different policy decisions, where 15 years from now, the council members here sitting up here are going, well, they did this, and this is why we're in that, that point. So that's the, the scary part.
Go ahead.
Ms. Gelsers.
Guys, I feel a lot of unrest up here tonight on this one subject, and I'm sure we have other subjects in the, uh, budget coming up. I'm going to throw this out to the council for consideration. What about if we do a continued resolution on the budget tonight? And by that, you know, the fiscal, the fiscal year ends, starts on Sep, on July the 1st. If we do this continued resolution, which is in our ordinance, and it's telling us that we have 120 days from July the 1st to pass the budget.
You said ordinance, you mean charter?
Order. Okay, yeah, charter, I'm sorry, I'm saying charter. You're right. Okay, so that continues, continued resolution will give us 120 more days. I'd like to see us adopt that, because it's, we, it's in our charter, or I think it's on page 79. Adopt that, move the retreat from August to, let's say, sometimes in July, and we can hatch out all of this, you know. And I think it would be more ready, because I think it's going to take more discussion than what we're doing tonight. So instead of passing the budget for July the 1st, we have, according to our charter, 120 days that'll put us to October the 1st to pass the budget. And let's move the retreat up, and let's sit down and hatch these problems out. If I don't, we got too much unrest tonight. And I don't think we're going to solve it tonight.
What would that do, if we did that, Mr. Lyons, to our department heads who want to hire people in the July 1st budget, who have people already interviewed and waiting for the budget to pass to be hired? And I'm talking about fire department. They've got, what, 11 people that have been interviewed, or 15 people that have been interviewed and, and are ready to be hired, but can't be hired until this budget's done? What's that going to do to them?
Mr. Lyons, let me, let me give you all some options to, to think about. A continuing resolution had been done years ago because the budget, we didn't have a budget calendar, you know, 10, 15 years ago, and sometimes the budget ran past July 1st, and we had a continuing resolution. It is extremely difficult on staff to do that. You get a budget calendar from me every January that lays out our required reading so that we're done by June 30th. And so my suggestion for you would be, you can adopt the budget on first reading. It's not final till you have second reading. We're for sure going to meet next week. We can also schedule a special, you know, council meeting, ideally before July 30th. There's also a lot of work that goes to loading the budget into, you know, our electronic system that's going to take the finance staff once you all settle in on the numbers. So I think you've got some options. If council wanted to address and study pay, that, you can do it. There's already a 2% increase in the budget. Doesn't mean you can't come back and supplement it some way, somehow, but, you know, you might want to think about passing it on first reading and then trying to set up some special meetings between now and, and the end of the year. In terms of the timing of the retreat, there's also, you know, a council election in early August, and, you know, that was, we were looking at late August, so the new council would be seated, and we could get the benefit of a retreat in that standpoint.
We don't have to go the whole 120 days. That's just the time space, but, you know, that's just a maximum. I, I'd just like to see us move this retreat. Everybody's, I hear everyone saying, retreat, retreat. Let's move this retreat up and start hatching out some of these issues. It doesn't have to go 120 days. We may go seven days over, 14 days over. But I think we need to get together and have a retreat and talk about some of these issues.
Just.
The people, as far as waiting to be hired, here again, we not, we don't have to use all of the 120 days.
I have no idea.
I'm going to be done with it.
Let me throw out two items. With Mr. Smotherman's idea of a flat $1,200 raise across the board, you're going to penalize some higher-end employees who have huge responsibilities and huge number of people that they're over. You're going to penalize those people, but you're, because you're not going to give them much of a percentage raise. I understand where you're coming from, but.
I'm not worried about the percentage, Doug, as much as I am the dollars. And, and it's the people at the bottom of the scale. The guy who's making, we've got 71 employees who are making over $70,000. We don't have that many people at the tie-in to the scale. It's only, you're talking 71 employees in that situation. At, and, and I agree, it is taking some money away from them.
Is that any more fair than giving someone at the bottom? I mean, you know, where, where does fairness come to play in this?
Well, fairness for me would be, is if I give you an allowance of $10, and I give Shane an allowance of $10, and I give Bill a shit, an allowance of $10, and said, okay, y'all go to the grocery store and y'all buy y'all some candy bars and some snacks, you can all buy the same amount with what I gave you. But at the end of the day, if I give him $30 and you $20 and Bill $10, and say, go buy you some snacks, then one of you's going to come back with significantly more, because he got a lot more money. Now, percentage-wise, according to what he had been getting, it may be different. But, but the fairness to me is the fact that we're giving them all the same amount. And so, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't think it's going to skew the number of the high-end employee if they were to decide to leave tomorrow and, and, and we had to replace them. The person who's going to hire in is not going to hire in, in most cases, anywhere close to the level that they're at because of years of service and where they promoted to. You generally don't hire people in at the, the maxed-out rate that the person would be making that left. But so, you're, you're still going to have the person who replaces them coming in at a lower level. The, the whole point of this, for me, is to try and help those employees on the bottom end of the scale, and, and to give everybody an equal amount and say, this is your raise this year. It's just like giving them a bonus, but I don't want to give them a bonus because I want it to be in their salary. And by, by putting it in their salary and moving the ranges up, basically, $1,200 is not going to significantly manipulate the study that we just got. But it gives everybody a ra, a raise, and it gives everybody $1,200, so it's $100 a month raise increase, and everybody can do with that $100 whatever they choose to do with it. So.
I'm, I'm struggling with it a little bit. I, I think, I, I think, you know, penalizing at the top, but I, I keep coming back to the idea of if we think there is an issue with what our jobs are paying at some level, whether it's lower level, mid-level, or whatever, if, if, if it's enough of an issue that we think it's an issue, then maybe we ought to address the issue.
Let's, let's bring the MAG lady back in.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe the, that's why I kind of keep coming back to that.
I have a suggestion that's probably not going to get a second, but, but here goes. Let's give everybody a 1% increase across the board, and make this our number-one priority item at our retreat. Bring the MAG lady in, and let's look at our.
We don't need to bring the MAG lady back in.
2%, yeah, maybe not. But don't put that as part of the motion. Did you mean 2%?
No, I meant an additional 1% increase, which is.
3% switch.
Which is going from two to three across the board. And I know you don't like that, because that's going to increase the budget. I understand that.
Yeah.
What about what I threw out about the continued resolution? We not going to entertain that?
I'm not.
Can we continue to hire people or not? I mean, would we be able to hire the firefighters or not?
Uh, to me, the continuing resolution is you run status quo. We wouldn't include any new, we would not be adopting a new budget, which includes the funding for those additional personnel.
We're not talking about 120 days, guys.
We're talking about people that have been interviewed, have had their physical fitness assessments.
We're not talking about a long time. I mean, we can do it in a week or two weeks. We're not talking about a long, and, we're not talking about a long time, guys. I'm just saying, we need to get together, have a retreat, and let's hatch this out.
Is anyone, I know we can't.
It could be a week.
Is anyone?
Can I make a motion? And, and, and I'll drop mine and be done with it if it doesn't get a second and it doesn't get a vote. But that way.
Well, the only, the only thing, I don't want, to me, let me just say my part about, thought about this. I like your creative thinking, Eddie. I, I think that you've addressed what I, and you had presented last time very creatively, and I, and I appreciate that out-of-the-box kind of thinking. But one thing I am assured of, when we talk about employee salaries, where there's a ying, there's a yang. And I'm not sure exactly what the implications are of the yang right now. I, I think you've, you've put something on the table that I would like to think, let's talk to Glenn about, at least in the next week, or somebody that is professionally trained to kind of look at, what, what are the implications of this?
Can we have Glenn come up and speak to us?
If, if you think that can be resolved at this point, fine. But I, I'm just concerned that if there is some other consideration, I don't want you to have the motion and it not pass, because we're not clear as to whether it's a good idea or not. I'm, I'm ready to think about it a little bit more. And would like to hear some advice from, from our staff about some of the implications of it. But, you know, I don't know that I could say I could go ahead with it right tonight. And, and, you know, it's, I don't think, I think we've still got enough time to postpone this at least a week, so we can still complete the budget in a timely fashion and make a, you know, have it voted on before our deadlines.
We've used first readings, knowing that there's time to come back and study on something. And if I might make a suggestion, if, if the council has options it wants to consider, you know, as you saw from the last meeting, we put our heads together, try to analyze it from every angle and come up with the cost estimates. We've got probably $60 million worth of human resource expense. And, you know, there are, anything, there can be unintended consequences. If you all direct staff to, to look at some of these alternatives, we will, you know, get together quickly and analyze them, you know, up, down, and across. But we'll just need to be clear from you what it is that you want us to analyze, and we'll deliver the same kind of material we gave you this meeting.
Well, can we have a retreat within the next 12 days? I mean, guys, we need to talk about this. We going back and forth.
Madam, we can have a special meeting anytime.
Okay, can we have that and try to hatch out this?
Sure, I mean, we can.
I think that's what we're.
I got an idea. I'm throwing it out here. I apologize, first of all, you were about, you were making a motion. I just cut out the MAG lady, but I interrupted you. You want to make that as a motion before I?
Well, let me, let me hear everybody's fair say. Everybody needs a fair shot, and everybody, we need to hear all these.
I probably have my fair shot. I, I, look, I, here's the deal. If we, if we go with the 2% for now, and potentially go ahead and do the insurance absorption, whatever y'all decide you want to do there, when we meet, if we, if we keep our meeting in, in August, then we can always come back and amend it. I mean, we could, if we just said, hey, look, we just think that didn't solve what we wanted it to solve, and now we've got our stuff together, and, you know, we, we, we got some professionals involved on a couple of different levels, and they say, hey, look, you ought to be paying this whole level of people in range 102, 103, through 109, or whatever, you know, however that thing worked, that they ought to be making more money, then we can address that still. Is that right? Can we still address it?
Well, I think that's.
One way or another?
Now, Rick, let me, let me make a comment now. If you want to put more dollars in everybody's pocket, a 1% increase raise will do that over the amount of even a 4% raise for the insurance.
Oh, I, I'm aware.
So if, if your goal is to put money in people's pocket, 1% straight across the board will put more money in people's pocket than, than taking away that 4% raise. And Mr., that was one of the challenges that we asked you to do, the 3% raise.
3%.
Here's the deal. If, you know, we got, we got somebody talking about giving flat dollars. There's, seems to be a little bit of support for that, kind of at a, at least some level of, you know, we, you know, not necessarily a vote level, but to some level, everybody kind of goes, yeah, I can see where that makes some sense. We got a lot of support for, feels like, the nodding heads to keep a percentage increase going. If we do a percentage increase in salaries, and we do the absorption of the insurance, which is by default a flat-dollar fee, we kind of get both. We get the percentage raises in salaries, and we give everybody a flat-dollar fee of increase. This is, that was my point two weeks ago, and I'm, what I'm trying to say here is this is.
And, and with, and with what your point is, that's actually less expensive than.
It's, it's, we, we borrow less money to make that happen.
So what you're recommending is, uh, leaving the 2% in.
2%.
And then absorbing the.
And we go from 7% to 0% as far as the increase to, to the, to the employees on their insurance cost. That gives everybody a 2% raise, plus a 12 to $28 per month savings on their insurance cost that we were going to affect on them. So it's either both.
But I, I, okay, now, now let me extend that idea. Okay. If you want to put more dollars in people's pockets, give them another 1%, which is more money than the insurance payment would be.
It is, but at that point, what happens is, you still, you still have penalized, you are giving a small, if we keep the 4% increase in insurance, okay, and we give a 3% salary increase, the people at the bottom end of the scale have gotten a smaller raise by percentage basis.
And you're significantly impacting.
But do you understand, you, you see what I'm, so everybody get me on that?
Mm-mm.
Okay, because you're going to get 3% minus 25. If I'm making $10,000 a year.
Nobody makes $10,000.
But it's making my math easy. I'm going to go to 100. I got to make my math easy. If I'm making $10,000 a year, I get a $300 raise, okay? We had 3%, but I got to pay 25. So I got $275 net raise. Everybody with me on that?
Mm-mm.
If I'm making $100,000 a year, I get a $3,000 raise, but I got 25 more in insurance costs. I got a $2,975 raise, which is a 2.975% raise. The guy at 10,000 backed off to 275, it's a 2.75% raise. 300 minus 25, and that's out at 275, which is 2.75%. So what I'm saying, that's a lot of math there, but the, the reality is, just think about it this way. You have one component of the benefit to the employees is a flat-dollar fee, which in his proposal is one that benefits the lower-paid folks a little bit more, right? But might penalize the upper.
I think what you're saying on.
I'm, I'm saying this might, I mean, I'm, I'm expecting a Nobel Prize here. I mean, this is like right in the middle here. I mean, what, is this not, you know, this is like, this is, this is a concession at best.
This is Chinese arithmetic, it's going to be.
It's real arithmetic, it's just.
I think what we have to be careful with, and this is where I'm probably having a good example. You know, we had the meeting on Sunday out at Oakland's that Eddie had put together. So we had Chief Dur, Gary Whitaker, who else did we have there that I'm forgetting?
Robert Holtz.
Yeah, Robert Holtz.
And Rob Mitchell.
There were three city employees that were there. And those are all what we're saying, high earners. And they came out and spent four hours on a Sunday, that we would not require someone else to do that. And so you look at Chief Dur sitting out in the audience, and I hate to pick on him, but you look at the amount of hours that Chief Dur works, after-hours, going to community meetings, especially in light of what's happened over the last two or three months, or two months. over the last two or three months, or two months. And to, to go and say, we're gonna penalize you because you're a high earner, it just doesn't seem right. So, I mean, I don't, I think the moment that we start saying-
If we go from 7% to 4%?
No, I'm just saying, yeah, it got you there.
That's-
Yeah. So what I'm just saying is-
Shane, does, does it feel right to you to say that the guy who makes $100,000 a year, if we go from 2%, which is $2,000 raise-
Right.
If, if we go to 3%, he gets a $3,000 raise.
Sure.
So, so he gets $1,000 more. For the guy who's making $25,000, he's getting $500 raise. He's gonna get a $250 raise when the other guy's already getting a $2,000 plus an additional $1,000. He's getting $3,000. This guy's gonna get $750. And somehow, y'all are justifying that and saying, that's fair. I don't, I, I-
I feel like I'm in the Democratic debate right now.
We sound like Congress. We need to solve this problem. Move on.
I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna move until we can get together on the retreat, that we will give employees, we're gonna stick with the budget, 2% raise, but that we absorb all of the additional insurance costs and health insurance.
On the employee side?
What?
On the employee side, correct?
On the employee side, yeah. So they, instead of them absorbing 4%, we're going, going from 7 to 4, we're gonna go from 7 to 0. Plus a 2% raise.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
I can't really say I'm going to, because I'm ready to go home. I'll, I'll second to see what y'all gonna do.
Okay, let, let me have a question, then. We can have discussion on the motion? Okay, if you do that, and what kind of, I mean, this seems complicated from a staff standpoint to implement, to adopt a budget and then have to alter what you're spec-
Right.
We're talking about enter all of this information into our-
We're not doing that.
Well, we have to, I guess, don't you, if you're changing, you don't?
If you make a change.
If we change it later, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but you meant with the motion.
I'm saying, because what, what we're doing is setting template for employees with this motion. And then if we have our retreat in August and say we adjusted it to do something else, then all of that information has to be changed. Is, am I wrong? Is that, I mean, so, so, so you've, you've changed all of that, you've, you basically doing that, that twice. And that's not a simple thing, is it, Glenn?
No.
Okay, that, that's a pretty complicated, especially with our new software. It's a, it's a complicated process. Is it, is it more prudent for us to plow through this in a special meeting in a couple of weeks or whatever? Is it to, to make sure we have definitively what we're gonna do than it is to put this off for a month? I mean, I, I, I don't know that it's not a better idea to get to a resolution of this, even though it takes us some time to, to maybe look at some alternatives.
My thoughts on that would be, if we, if we talk about something in August, that maybe, you know, we, if we were to make some adjustments, that maybe that'd be a January 1 thing, and we just have to give them time, they'd have to do it twice, and that would be a bummer, but everybody'd be getting paid more, and so be it. I, I hate it, but-
The health insurance-
I think we need to get people some raises here pretty quick.
I agree with-
In two weeks.
I agree with that. I just have a spiritual unrest on this. And then you made a good point, Shane, about the extra hours, you know, and everything. And that was a very good point. And I thought about, look what we make, and look at the, all the hours that we put in. I mean, so, I mean, we wouldn't-
You've got a good point there. Really good point.
No objection?
Shane pointed out that we were all out there as well on Sunday at 95.
And look at all the things we do and all the phone calls we take, and look what we bring home. But, I mean, but that's, I just have a spiritual unrest about the whole thing, guys. And I'm just gonna pray about it.
You know, at the same time, you know-
I'm wrestling with my spirit now, I'm telling you.
There's certain people that we pay a lot of money, that if they miss a day's work, nobody calls me and complains. But if the guy on the brush truck, or the guy driving the trash truck, doesn't show up for work, and the trash doesn't get picked up one day, I get called immediately. And, and, and why wasn't my trash picked up, or why wasn't my brush picked up in a timely manner? So, so to say that somehow, and, and, and I'm very thankful to the brush employees and solid waste people, I mean, throw that in, because they have done a phenomenal job of catching up the downtown area in the last couple of weeks on the brush pickup. And I know they did it by working overtime on Wednesdays and Saturdays and-
Working again this Saturday.
Yeah. So, so, so thank you so much to them. That, that they have done a tremendous job of getting us caught up in, in the situation that we've been in.
You have a motion in a second.
So we have a motion in a second.
May I ask on the insurance cost, is this going to affect the premium, or is this just gonna mean the city will cover the infusion into the insurance fund?
City will cover it. Whatever the different, how, how are we gonna address the 7 to 4 situation?
So I think what he's saying, Ms. Wright, is that, you know, we were, it was recommended to 7, then we decided to 4, and so instead of 4, it'd be 0.
But we, but that was on both sides, where this is one side. So that's what I'm asking. We've got that 80/20 split with the HRA being 8317.
What, here's what, here's what the motion is. The employee doesn't pay any additional dollars for their, their insurance. However y'all deal with that, y'all deal with that. I'm, I don't, well, y'all, that's, leave that to y'all. But all it is, is that the employee doesn't pay any of their additional costs.
Okay. Just for them, they're on their own insurance, so if it's, the family's insured, they have to pay?
No, on their policies, whatever their policy is.
Whatever their policy is.
I'm in employer versus employee, employee versus employer, not employee versus their family. The, when she was asking, you were asking employee versus employer.
The premium shared, 80% employer, 20% employee, on every kind of policy.
Any kind of policy.
Yeah.
If it's a, not an HRA, yes. And so this, this is just to say the employee will not get an increase, and the city can manage how that would happen should y'all pass it.
Ms. Wright, call the roll, please.
Ms. Gels Harris?
This is first reading, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Until I can pray about it, my answer's, I'm going to no.
And this is not the whole budget. This is just on this increase for salaries.
Exactly.
Okay. Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
I've got to say no.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Motion passes.
2%.
All right, next, Mr. LaLance.
Mayor, are there any other changes that you all have on the budget?
I don't think so. Any other changes, council members?
Oh, relates to the homeless alliance, is to, did we approve that in our last-
Mr. Crumley is-
I didn't think we did, so, okay, so.
We did, but this one was not included.
Homeless li, I would propose that we fund the $15,000 request from the Homeless Alliance of Rutherford County to be added to our budget.
That would be in the general fund, as opposed to Mr. Callow's department.
Yeah, and, and we'll say, you have a letter, but what they're specifically targeting this, you know, Mr. Foster spoke before the meeting, but they're specifically targeting this, these funds for a campus delivery method, which is something we've talked about for several, many, many years, so.
Do we have a second?
I think we have a second already.
Doug, second.
Motion a second?
Yeah, second.
Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll consider for passage on first reading order, 16024, the, yes, sir.
Sorry, I, you asked if there were any other questions. You know, one of the things that I brought up last, and, you know, I hate to beat on this a little bit, but my concern with dipping into fund balance, as much as we are, there were some ideas that, that Rob pushed through here. I, I think I'm gonna ask it in this way. Is anybody interested in digging into that? Or I'll, I'll make a motion that, that we're discuss the fund balance.
I don't think you, you don't need to move.
Yeah, well, if nobody's saying it, I'm just not gonna talk about it.
No.
Whatever. I mean, I, I just, I don't want to dig in there, and, but if nobody really-
Sounds like a great retreat topic.
It's, it's a, it's a great topic, considering we're borrowing money, but we're increasing our fund balance. And, and he's, I think that Rick is right on target. When, when, when we say that we've gone to the bank and we've borrowed money, and we've increased our fund balance, and somehow that's a good thing. Because, I mean, at the end of the day, we ultimately have to look on, look at the amount of debt that we're incurring, and how that debt is increasing. It's, it's almost as if we're manipulating the budget, from my perspective, but it, you have any feelings on that, Rick?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with, I'm uncomfortable with the amount of expenditures that we have. It's very simple stuff here. I mean, it's just the fact that we're budgeting basically for a 3% cushion for the whole budget. You know, I mean, and it wasn't necessarily quite that bad, but the fact that we didn't do the hotel motel tax extended that deficit by another million bucks, basically. And we didn't cut any expenditures to, to sort of match up to that. We just said, well, we're just gonna spend another million dollars out of fund balance. So if, if we needed that tax to be able to operate the city, you know, and, and here's, here's the thing with the fund balance, it does feel good that we've added to it. So when we get these things that say, look, we've added to it the last eight years, we haven't added to it nearly as much as what our net borrowing has gone up. So, you know, this is something I think we absolutely need to talk about at the retreat, as far as directionally, which way is it going? Are we still inside the ratios? Absolutely. Are we solid? Yes. But as we start pushing those ratios towards their limits, we're gonna run out of the capability of doing this. And so, do we address it now? Do we not? Do we wait? You know, I'm, I've tried to address it a little bit over the last couple of months, and certainly over the last few weeks, but I don't want to just be up here talking, you know? I mean, it's, it's gotta be something, I think. I mean, he, Rob did give us some, some ideas that if we wanted to kind of cut that, cut that back a little bit. You know, we've got slippage in our, in our unfilled vacancies that we could consider doing. It might, you know, we could go ahead and, you know, we, we kind of know that there's gonna be some slippage in payroll, where people don't work, you know, every single person doesn't work every single hour of every single year or on a paid basis. So we've got some cushion built into the budget just in that. And we have $500,000 set aside for unforeseen contingencies, when we kind of already have money set aside in this slippage that we know is gonna occur. And so, you know, I don't know. I guess, guys, I'm just, you know, I mean, directionally, I'm trying to bring it up, and trying to make sure we're being aware of it, and that, you know, as our debt per capita goes up, as our total debt number goes up, you know, this is something that's, it's hard to turn the train around, you know, so we gotta, it's, it's a concern for me.
Could we, you know, again, I think we have a staff that could, we could task to make some recommendations to how we control, or maybe what we could do, what could be some of the areas that we could, that we could address this. Even in the short term, maybe, maybe there's some, I mean, if this becomes, and I agree with you, this, it's not, as long as you have a, a capacity to borrow, sometimes you will, when you don't need to. So the, the issue is, maybe we need to say, what are we doing to maybe not borrow when we have the capacity to self-fund, like some of these other things, even if we fund, fund out of our, our fund balance?
Yeah.
So those recommendations and the priority setting need to come from our department heads, need to come from our staff. I mean, I certainly don't feel, you know, adequate to make those decisions and set that priority. But, but if that is the will of council, and I, I think it always should be a financially responsibility of us to look at those long-term things. But I don't know that it's, I think those are, those are the broad issues that we probably, you know, like you say, set the course for what's gonna happen in the future. And, and I appreciate the fact that you're saying, warning, there is a yellow light flashing.
I don't want it to be, I mean, I really don't mean it to be, you know, like that, you know, like a big, you know, a big red light. I, I, I don't know. I, here's what I do know. We borrowed 50 million bucks more than we paid off last year, and we got 60 million bucks in our fund balance. You know, had we not, had we paid for that out of fund balance, instead of borrowing the additional money, we, you know, we'd have 10 million bucks in our fund balance, unless that. But it, it could go away pretty quickly.
That's true of my bond rating so bad.
No, it's, it's okay. I mean, it's not, it's a, you know, look, the, the reason most of that came down is the police headquarters, it's a 40-year asset, it's a 15-year loan. I mean, it's, it's, I'm not trying to say it's big, you know, but, but directionally is what I think we need to be aware of. And when I see budgeted deficit, you know, whatever we wanna call it, we may not actually spend it, but we're budgeting to spend more, and we're borrowing money. You know, it kind of, it gives me a little heartache. So I think we need to make sure we address it in a way where we kind of look at that and go, okay, where are our ratios? Where are we getting that's information?
The tough thing, trying to study this, that, you know, that the city budget meshes together income statement items and balance sheet items. So, you know, you've got your balance sheet, but our fund balance, even though we're plugging that into sort of our, our budgeting, but that fund balance is on our balance sheet, as far as this is what our number is. So some of those items, it's, after all these years, it's tough to get all those reconciled back together. So that's where it's, you know, my business, I can look and easily say, here's the income coming in, here's my balance sheet, here's what I owe. But a lot of the money that comes in is a little bit to mix. So, but you, that's a great point.
I don't think we solved it, man. I think we need to make that a long-term look see and do it, and make that one of our priorities to the tree, and, and get some ratios and do that. Because one thing we hadn't mentioned is our income keeps going up every year. You know, our property taxes are, are good. Our sales tax is exceeding our property tax, and that's very unusual for me as a father. So you've got to look at that side also. The income potential is, is continuing to grow. Look at all the things that the, the Planning Commission and this council approved tonight that's gonna increase property taxes and sales tax.
I mean, part of, you know, part of the, part of the concern or the heartache would be that we have more revenue now than we've ever had, and we're still budgeting to spend more than we have.
And, and you mentioned a good point, is the, the new police building. That's three-quarters of our borrowing this year.
Yeah, on the borrowing side, that's true. But, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough one, and there's all kinds of stuff in there with capital, you know, the, there's CIP stuff that's in the budget that may or may not actually happen this year. I mean, so it's a difficult, tight rope to walk here. And I, I think, you know, one of the suggestions that Rob had made was potentially starting to look at separating out the, the capital improvement stuff into a department where it makes it easier for us to look through what really is the operating piece on a day-to-day basis. You know, I mean, it, it pulls out those, those projects that we know, like the police headquarters. We're funding over a very long period of time. It's gonna be asset that's here for a very long time. And now we're talking about, you know, day-to-day operational. Are we really spending more than we're bringing in? I mean, I think that would be really helpful. And I don't know if, if you're expecting us to need a, a motion for, for to direct you to do stuff like that, or if you're just listening and gonna consider, or what.
You know, I, I, it works best if I have clear direction from the council. You know, I'm listening, I've taken, you know, notes, but there was a lot of conversation and ideas. But if we're going to study something, analyze something, I really do need to get some, some clear direction, so I understand what the, the will of the council is.
I mean, if the council would agree, I think what would make sense is, you know, we've got two, what I would say, high-level, high-topic issues. One being use of fund balance. Because something that we easily could look at use of fund balance is- 'cause something that we easily could look at use of fund balances, you know, I think you budgeted for a 5% increase in sales tax revenue this past year, or this upcoming year. We actually had a 7% increase, so, you know, do we, are we, we're being conservative on our revenue and conservative on our expenditures, well, should we go through and say, "Well, we need to budget 7% increase." And so that takes that fund balance, what we're looking, but if we don't hit that, there's a lot of different items we could, we could look at. So if, you know, that's one topic, Rick, the fund balance. And the other topic is what we're gonna do with our, our pay studies. So could we ask that maybe do a special meeting or a preface to the retreat that we discuss these two specific items, and we can give you clear direction as a, as a council, what we would, would want staff to do? What do y'all think about that?
So are you talking about a special council meeting and then a retreat?
No, we could just do it at the...
At the retreat.
Yeah, just do it at the retreat.
Retreat, okay. And when would you like to do the retreat? We've got options there.
I think the week that we were looking at was that, that third week of August that...
I think it's probably better to have the new people here. I don't wanna put it off either, but I think that's probably better.
I agree. Okay, so...
And if you haven't responded back to Ms. Tig, please do. She's heard from some of you, but as of yesterday, I don't think it heard from everyone, so I, we do need to get your calendars.
Hey, Rob, how much, when, in the suggestion in here that you put as far as increasing the, the estimates for slippage, how much of a, how much would you feel comfortable with in that number?
I did not calculate it before I came in here. That would be the kind of thing I'd really wanna get.
So, so here's, here's what I'd like. I mean, I wanna, I wanna do something a little more specific tonight if I can. And part of it is just to try to make up a little bit of the difference between, you know, we were already at a deficit, we lost a million bucks with the hotel motel tax, right? So that puts us at about five something, or whatever it is, or close to five, I think, maybe. We know we're gonna have some room in the slippage area. We know we're probably gonna have some room in the interest line item, you know, 'cause so much of our debt now is fixed, instead of having so much in variable. And we also then have this $500,000 unforeseen contingencies. Does it, does it matter from an amendment standpoint at all? I mean, if we, if you wanna spend $300,000 out of unforeseen contingencies for something, that still has to come back up in front of here, we've got a vote on it. Is that right?
Absolutely.
So if we, if...
But...
Not unless you're just moving it.
A project like that is likely gonna be, if it was that big an expense, it's...
So my, well, my question was, if, if we reduce that to $250,000, and then we put in another $250,000 into the unfilled vacancy piece, that would be a $500,000 reduction. So we'd at least be cutting into half of what we took down on the hotel motel tax. On my second reading, can you take a look at the impact of that and see if that would, is that, is that correct? Am I thinking about that right? As far as if we, if we took, took unforeseen contingencies down to 250...
They'd be dollar-for-dollar reductions.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's why I read it by your memo, so, yeah, so it would just be a broad-based thing, right? I'm just trying to cut into a little bit of what we added by not doing the hotel motel tax, so that our deficit isn't growing by that much. And when I say deficit, I just mean the budgeted deficit, okay? I mean, it's not... Can we, can I just, can we just see what that looks like?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll, I'll bring it up on second, if, second reading, if that's something that we think we can do.
Very good.
Set. Everybody understand, is all cool with that? Nothing now, but...
Okay, we now have, consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16025, the tax, excuse me, 16024, the appropriations ordinance. I do have one question, Mr. Lyons, that, could you come back? And we traditionally have talked about this, but by the next meeting, let's talk about topped-out employees. I know we traditionally have talked about that, but just to give us an idea of what that...
Mayor, with the 2% increase in the ban, there won't be any topped out. They may top out again with, with the ban moving, but what was proposed originally was the ban was moving 2% plus 2%, so topped out should be covered this year.
So someone who's topped out, someone who's topped out now?
Unless they're over the ban.
Right.
If they're already over the ban, they would not get an increase.
They're significantly over the ban, then, okay. All right, that, that helps. Okay. Okay, consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16024, the appropriations ordinance.
So moved. So moved.
Settle.
Motion's a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris? Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Will consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16025, the tax rate ordinance.
Move for passage on first reading?
Settle.
Motion's a second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for adoption resolution 16R13 to provide other post-employment benefit to retirees for fiscal year 2016, '17.
Mayor, we do this every year to say that we're gonna continue providing insurance to our retirees for one more year. This, this is an annual election, it's not part of our pension plan.
So moved.
Settle.
Motion's a second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have three boardin' appointments. Reappoint Kent Seiler, reappoint Dr. Lynda Gilbert and Mr. Eddie Miller, and reappoint Ryan Crabtree to the water service board.
So moved.
Settle.
Motion's a second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Your permits?
Mayor, we have two tonight. We have a special event permit for the BEP Foundation for an event at 1272 Garrison Drive on June the 25th, 2016. We also have a special event permit for the Darryl Worley Foundation to be held at 2250 Northwest Broad Street on July the 19th. Both of these applications are in order, and we recommend approval.
Motion for your permit?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's a second.
I can't even get a second on that.
Sorry, I was reading.
That was pretty polite, I thought.
Motion's a second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any payment of statements?
Not tonight, mayor.
Okay. Any other business for staff?
Just one reminder, mayor, as much as I know you all enjoy this burgundy carpet and these burgundy chairs, they are getting ready to be replaced. So beginning with your council meeting next week, we will be at the Patterson Community Center until July the 11th. Comcast provided the Communications Department a grant, so we'll be converting to high-definition television, as well as doing, while they're moving the lights and cameras, we'll be doing an interior renovation of this room, which hadn't been done since the building was constructed.
I have one thing, wanted to get council's opinion, whether this is a good idea or a bad idea, but we had the meeting on Sunday, which I think got some really good input out at Oakland's. But there's 11 acres that backs up to Oakland's mansion that has supposedly come on the market, or, but is that something that the council would want staff to at least look at for the extension to Oakland Park?
I would like to see that information. I think that's an opportunity possible.
Sure.
All right.
Groundbreaking tomorrow.
Yeah, it has a groundbreaking for the police headquarters tomorrow, 10:30. Is that right?
10:00.
Everybody come. Everybody come. 10 or 10:30.
10:00 AM, correct, chief?
10 AM.
10 o'clock, yes.
Promise to be cool, and it'll be nice. All right. Seeing no other business, we'll stay on the journey.